I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in this nation, under God, in his name, liberty and justice for all. Please stand for a moment of silence. First down the agenda, the Environmental Affairs Committee with Chairman Coronerwetter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a presentation tonight, Ian Smith, on the Nine Element Plan for Seneca Lake, recently adopted by the... This is Ian Smith. He's going to give us a presentation on the Nine Element Plan. It was just adopted by the state for Seneca Lake. And then we have a resolution following wheat harvesting. This is a great step forward for Seneca Lake to get this Nine Element Plan accepted by the state. It's all yours, Ian.
All righty, thank you. Can anyone hear me okay, or do I need the mic?
We're good.
We're good? All right. Just for a second. First off, thanks for having me tonight.
Ian, if you don't speak into the mic, the public won't be able to hear you.
Oh, okay, you got to zoom. Okay, that's right. I'll take this time. Thanks, Kyle. Thanks for having me tonight, and thanks for letting me go first. I always appreciate that. Yeah, so I'm here to give you a quick wrap-up of the Nine Element Plan, or to be more specific, the Seneca-Cueca Nine Element Plan for phosphorus. As Paul mentioned, we recently got word last week that it was officially approved by DEC and DOS for approval, so we are now all set to go forward. And one of the principal reasons that we pursued this plan is because of some of the things I'll briefly touch on. It's a higher-level approach to watershed planning than traditionally done, and as a result, it lets us access dollars and compete more competitively against other grant seekers through a number of programs. And we've already taken advantage of just the draft elements, and I'll touch on that a bit, too. I'll just wait a moment here. Well, I guess I'll go ahead and start with some background. So, 2018, a group of individuals from Seneca Watershed Intermunicipal Organization, who I am with, the Cueca Watershed Improvement Cooperative, the Cueca Lake Association, and the Seneca Lake Pure Waters Association, and the Finger Lakes Institute, got together to propose pursuing the development of a Nine Element Plan. Individuals from these organizations got together to set up a committee, and they went to a number of organizations in the local watershed community, including Seneca County, of course, to attain $90,000 in local funds to be used as match and support for a state grant through the Department of State Local Waterfront Revitalization Program for another 75% of the project cost, so $270,000 from the state, $90,000 locally. And we also leveraged some additional volunteer contributions through the project, so we've been able to save some of those local dollars towards future projects. And in 2018, at the end of the year, received word that the grant was accepted. And in 2019, I started, on April 1st, and so did the Nine Element Plan process. And officially, as of October 12th, that project was completed. So, the Nine Element Plan, what is it? I won't bore you with the exact details. It's not creatively named. There are nine elements. The EPA identified as necessary for good watershed planning, but together, they basically address four questions. What are the current conditions in your water body? What are the trends that you've observed over time leading you to those current conditions? What are the conditions you are trying to achieve? And then, lastly, how do you get from where you are to where you want to be? That's the basic framework behind the Nine Element Plan. There we go. I'm all set. Thanks. Seems to be working. Okay, so, what makes this approach unique to traditional watershed planning? The use of quantitative tools, namely modeling. For our watershed, we use what's called the Soil and Water Assessment Tool. It is a model developed at Texas A&amp;M largely geared towards capturing watershed runoff information from agricultural watersheds. Obviously, this watershed and most of the Finger Lake watersheds, for that matter, are agriculturally dominated, and we are not the only watershed in the area to be using this model. We must have a second model here called the bathtub model because Cueca Lake is part of our watershed, uniquely among the Finger Lakes. It drains into another Finger Lake, so we developed a small empirical model specifically for Cueca, all right, that I can really touch on. But one of the reasons, and this is really why the Nine Element Approach has generated access to additional dollars, is this quantitative tool provides more rigorous justification for what you propose in the plan. And the SWOT model, what it does is it allows you to recreate the conditions in the watershed, and more importantly, allows you to test certain approaches to improvement, to sort of project what the improvement will be, thereby helping you tailor your management approach going forward to produce the greatest return for the lowest investment of effort in dollars. So we plug all this into the model, and it spits out a bunch of different information, information about the composition of the watershed that gets fed into it, such as the land use here in the top left. And out of it, you get information around the watershed per acre load-in based on land use types, different phosphorus load-ins on a per acre per year around different parts of the watershed. And this information can then inform where you want to target your limited resources to get the best approach for your effort going forward. So we have this long list. We break it up into our unit of measure, which is, in this case, what we call a HUC-12, Hydrological Unit Code 12. There are 20 in our watershed, and they're all bordered around major, quote-unquote, "major" streams in the watershed. Because Seneca and Cueca Lake are not impaired, as in Cayuga Lake, which is why Cayuga Lake has a total maximum daily load, very similar to 90, but not quite, we don't have a regulatory target associated with Seneca Lake, so our projected reduction targets are protective so that we can maintain or improve on our existing quality. And we set our target reductions based around the composition of each of these HUC-12s. Those watersheds that are more highly altered, either through urbanization or agriculture development, have a higher target reduction than watersheds that have lower conversion, largely because we have more opportunity to do work in those areas, and also some sensitivity to some projected additional changes in precipitation going forward. So you can see here, our net reduction targets vary around watershed, a sub watershed, anywhere from 2% to 16%. So those are our targets going forward. So, we know where we are. We've seen the trends. We know where we want to be now. That leaves the last question. Oop. Did I just die somehow? I don't know what happened there.
Don't you love computers?
So that leaves the question of how do we get to where we want to be? And because the 90 is a community-based process, we went through a number of outreach events around the watershed where we got feedback. We proposed actions, got feedback on how those actions were viewed, and we generated a, what we've termed, the action matrix. Very exciting, but not really. And what it is, is a prioritization of different approaches to improving water quality tied to the geographical target areas where they'll be most effective. And we prioritize them based on efficiency, existing resources in the watershed to implement them, cost, all sorts of factors. And from that, we now have a guidance on the sorts of projects we want to do going forward. So, in the future, obviously, the plan is there. We have the modeling tools that can help us adapt and change going forward, but the real work to be done going forward now is execution, executing the actions proposed in the document. So, I was going to share a few projects that we've started, specifically in Seneca County. There we go. So there's the exciting matrix. So let's talk about the work going forward now that we have this in place. So, here's one in Seneca County specifically. So here's a proposed action in the document, reduce flow velocities and promote sedimentation within road ditches. We received a grant through the Department of State LWRP program, the same program that funded the 90. Because we were doing the 90, we were qualified to access those funds to begin with. We tried to do Phase 1 and Phase 2 combined, but DOS doesn't like that approach, so we are working with Soil and Water Conservation District, and the town of Fayette is the sponsor, to do a prioritization and data acquisition of road ditch condition and culvert size and assessment throughout the county in both the Cayuga and Seneca watershed. And then, once we've completed that analysis, we'll be able to go in to the same grant program and access dollars to do implementation and improvements around the watershed. Another example, oh, I don't know if this will work here. I'll just talk about this one. It should be a video. I don't think it's going to play, though. So this is a market-based approach. We've been working with Wine and Grape Foundation, nonprofit entity representing the wineries in the state, to develop a sustainable certification program whereby producers can obtain certification for producing their wines in such a way that they promote environmental benefits, including water quality. The idea here is, one of the challenges with working landscapes is anytime you take land out of production, of course, you're losing an opportunity to generate revenue, but sometimes, say, for a stream buffer, for example, you want to establish that sort of environmental protection benefit. So this allows producers to basically increase their market value to consumers by the sustainable certification, therefore offsetting those costs to implement these practices that we're trying to promote. Cover cropping, very effective, as you can see from the graph here. So this is an example of using the SWOT model to project the potential benefit. We accessed dollars through Great Lakes Commission, again, because of the draft 90 quantitative numbers that we were able to sell to Great Lakes Commission. We were able to access some dollars from them to do cover cropping and other agricultural BNP's throughout the watershed, including, I think, 600 acres in Seneca County, I believe? 600? 700?
1,500.
1,500, even better. Yeah, so throughout the watershed, in total, we're projecting over 3,500 pounds of reduction from this project. Of course, those are just a handful of quick ones. You've got the drinking water project. You've got some culvert work done down in Lodi. I'm sorry, bridge work down in Lodi. This is green infrastructure in Geneva. I'm really excited about this project. It's getting towards completion, so if you're ever that way, check it out. Come together quite nicely. Some sediment retention basins in the Highlands to store water and keep it from running off downstream. Invasive species pools, which I'm sure is going to come up. And of course, outreach, that's always an effective, cost-effective tool to engage landowners that potentially can do projects. So I don't want to take up a bunch of your time, but I will leave you with this idea here. All right, so in the watershed, we get 35 inches of rain annually. We have 450,000-plus acres of land in the watershed, and we have 37,000-plus parcels in the watershed. Break that all down, the average parcel size is 12 acres, and we have 430 billion gallons of rainfall combined in the watershed. So, on the average parcel of land in the watershed, you'll get an 11.6 million gallons, or 3/100% of the rain falling on the watershed in a given year. So, what am I getting at here for the average parcel? If you turn it into a black hole where no runoff could ever happen, you barely address the problem. So two things here. No one person is to blame for where we're at. Doesn't mean everyone's equitable, but there's no point in pointing the finger at one individual person, and there's no one individual person who can get us to where we want to be. So it's a collaborative approach going forward. That's why the 90 was approached. That's why we developed it through a community-led effort and feedback, and that's why we're going to approach it going forward. So unless there's any questions, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Any questions from the board?
Ian, on that one chart, you showed that percent attributed to climate. What did you, what does that mean?
Yeah. So, the latest, I forget what the acronym exactly stands for, NEIPCC. It's the National Climate Plan that's put out every, I think, four-year assessment, every four years. They projected precipitation changes for different parts of the country in the Northeast. They projected a 10% increase in total rainfall under current conditions. So what we did was built that into the SWOT model so we could look at how sensitive different parts of the watershed are to those changes. You can think of, like, a highly urbanized area. We have a lot of impervious surface. You increase rainfall in that area, you're going to get a lot more runoff than you're currently seeing. And anyone who's seen Castle Creek in Geneva can see that firsthand. We've got bluffs 15 feet tall.
Does that take into account, so not only an increase in precipitation, but an increase in drastic precipitation events?
We can't do intensity, unfortunately. Yeah, yeah.
That 10% increase, that was over what period of time? Is that per year, per decade, or what?
It's projected over the average observed up to the point that the report was produced. So the average to, I believe we used the 2014 document, because it was the most recently available that we had data for, and then it's projected to 2050. So by 2050, they're projecting the 10% increase. I could be wrong, of course. One way, up or down. That's projection for you. Models are reasonably realistic recreations of observable truths. So they're the best thing we can do. Right.
Hey, Mattos.
That's like budgeting, I'm sure, right? That's like budgeting for next year, I'm sure.
Ian, would it be safe to say that what happens in this watershed obviously affects Cuyga Lake watershed area? Because Cueca Lake to Seneca Lake, Seneca Lake to Cuyga Lake. So that has some impact on this area as well.
Yep.
And obviously, we have our own issues as well, type of thing, but it's all one connected type of situation.
It is, it is, yeah. And the approaches are going to be largely similar, too. So just because the similarities between the two watersheds geographically and composition-wise, yeah. So I think there's, and there is an equivalent of myself for Cayuga Lake now, who's actually housing the office next to me. So I think there are opportunities to combine the watersheds going forward, just like that GLC project that we did both lakes, just because it made sense to do. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well said. Thank you very much, Ian. Next on the Environmental Committee, I have supervisors to commit to a 2023 Cuyga Lake weed harvesting strategy and plan.
Motion.
Hang on a second.
Second.
Thank you. Whereas wheat harvesting was not successfully undertaken on the north end of Cuyga Lake in 2022, and whereas water quality and weed control are integral to the use and enjoyment of Cuyga Lake for both residents and visitors, whereas is imperative that a strategy and plan be developed and implemented for appropriate and successful weed harvesting to commence no later than May 1st, 2023, and whereas a plan and allocation of resources needs to be in place no later than November 30th, 2022, and whereas this resolution has been reviewed and approved by Environmental Affairs Standing Committee at its meeting on October 25th, 2022, and now therefore be it resolved that a strategy and plan along with necessary resource allocations be adopted and implemented no later than November 30th, 2022, and be it further resolved that said plan be ready to commence no later than May 1st, 2023. Have any discussion?
Supervisor, who is going to do the wheat harvesting?
That's what this is all about. You know, up to this, you know, point, it's been the Soil and Water Board of Directors for years, they've been doing it, but we can't wait another year for inaction, so... I'm not really concerned how you go about it. I know a discussion with Aaron and Jeff, they like the idea of having Cuyga County do it, but that hasn't been successful this year, and we're on, you know, we're on their agenda when they get around to it. Understand that wheat harvesting isn't in the soil and water's main mission statement, and if they don't want to do it, I suggest we turn it over to the Highway Department and have the FLOPA funds follow it over there, and it's no different mowing grass on the side of the road, it's just in the lake. We have a perfectly good harvester sitting in the barn right now that we could utilize the first thing in the spring. It'd be good if we had a transport barge to go with it, but I don't care how it gets done. I'd just like to see a plan in place.
Is the harvester that we currently have, is that a cutter, or does that pull them out?
No, it's a cutter. It's circle bars like this and like this.
How deep, how far down does that go?
I'm guessing six foot deep, probably. Four foot, six foot deep. But there's, I know there's some people that live on the lake that are here that will agree with me that it was just unacceptable this summer. You know, you can't jump off the end of your dock. You can't get your boat out of the hoist.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a suggestion? November 30 is a pretty aggressive date, but with that in mind, may I suggest that yourself, and maybe include me, or, you know, as long as we have a plan, is not going to create itself. So this resolution does nothing other than telling us that it's a primary focus of this, I know, this board. And we've told people, so if it's a plan is, okay, we're going to bring back the harvester we had. The plan would be, what repairs need to be done? Okay? So they're done. Do we purchase a boat behind, maybe a new boat, to make the process faster? Is it going to come under the umbrella with Roy Gates? Okay? Is the town of Seneca Falls going to be a participant? Those are the things that I think we need to meet quickly on as a subcommittee meeting before we can come to November 30th and come to the full board and say, okay, folks, this is the plan, and we need $4 million right now. Okay?
Well, I don't believe that's true.
Well, I'm being, obviously, I'm exaggerating, but to have a plan, I think that's going to require a few meetings with some of the players I just mentioned. And soil and water obviously should be one of the players. I, for one, would want soil and water to continue to take care of the canal as much as possible with the smaller harvester, but I would suggest, it shouldn't, you're the chairman, I would suggest that maybe sooner than later, we get some stakeholders involved so we can come back to this board November 30th with a plan.
Well, this is directed at the Soil and Water Board of Directors. You know, if you guys can come up with a plan, that'd be great. I'd love to have you guys continue doing it, but somebody got to take it serious.
Again, I think this board is taking it seriously. You know, let's get a meeting on the calendar, you know? Next week, the week after, let's get a meeting on the calendar and, you know, get the stakeholders in the room and see how we can solve the problem.
Board of Directors, me.
When do we meet?
Last month.
Yeah, we meet again.
We can meet.
We can call a special meeting.
Do it right now. I got most of the board right here right now. I miss the one guy.
Can some from, do you have suggestions? Jeff?
Well, I just wanted, like, I thought...
Anybody, do you guys have a plan that I don't know about?
Well, we have the presentation, and that will encompass, so let me, well, yes, at the end. I think it's part of, like, to Mike's point and Bob's point, I read this and thought, is the plan simply to buy a wheat harvester? Or, I mean, I wasn't sure, because I agree with Mike, even for our board, let me back up, even for the Board of Directors for Soil and Water, to come up with a plan, I guess it depends upon, that board would need to know what resources are going to be made available.
Well, you've had access to them for, since the beginning, you know?
Well, but not the...
Aaron knows the condition of the harvesters and...
Right, right.
And the equipment that we have. I don't know if we necessarily need all new equipment. That would be ideal, but even if we ordered it today, we wouldn't have it by spring. And we can't wait a year and a half.
Agreed, and I think that board agrees.
Mr. Chairman?
Aaron, you have a presentation on it, and in your presentation?
It will not only soil and water, the brack spectrum of what we do, but it will also include factual information about what's happening.
Great.
Mr. Chairman, just one thing to add. I think we need to listen to their presentation and see what they have to say before...
No, that was in the presentation.
No, I understand that, but I agree with Mr. Farrar that this needs to move, and some decisions, I think the first decision is soil and water needs to make a decision, either they're in or they're out when it comes to wheat harvesting, and then we can go forward from that point.
All right. So this was, you know, a conversation piece here. We need to get a conversation going on.
Right, right. Do you think, Paul, like, was part of your idea behind this that there might be, maybe not the million, but there might be some ARPA funds available to help address the issue?
Yes.
Okay.
So, you know, a tableless resolution?
No, I don't think we ought to table. I think we ought to keep it there.
All right, let's have a vote on it.
Hopefully, between now and the 30th, we get the stakeholders together.
Have a plan. All right, all those in favor?
Hi.
Oh, whatever, we have a question.
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
Who's in charge of putting the plan together? Like, this resolution doesn't say.
I know, this is, this is the point. It has been the Soil and Water Board of Directors for the last 20 years, or whatever, 30 years we've been doing it. And so, you know, if they don't want to do it, we have to find somebody else.
No, I'm just saying...
Beth, I don't think, excuse me, I don't think it's like a master complicated situation. I think once we sit down and find out where we can collaborate with Soil and Water and, you know, how much they can do or can't do, I think the plan is, obviously, you know, the county would then handle it, maybe in collaboration with the town of Seneca Falls helping out as far as providing labor, okay? And the plan would be, we would probably be using the current harvester that we have and trying to find some vehicle, some barge, that maybe we can get a lot quicker than waiting a year and a half for, to help, you know, transport it out of the harvester. I don't think it's going to be a complicated thing. I think that committee that you are going to put together, Chairman?
Yes, I will.
Okay. I think that will, I don't think it's too complicated, to be honest with you, but it's a very good question.
And I think just to give some meat to that, is that, so a possible part of the plan might be a combination of hiring Cuyga County and our harvester and doing things together. That might...
Be great.
...to get us through, at least, yeah.
You know, it might mean one of us taking a ride over to Cuyga County and saying, folks, we appreciate what you've done over the past. Can we get a little bit of a stronger commitment? We're in a bind right now, you know, blah, blah, blah. I think it's just a matter of communication sometimes that will try to eliminate some of these things.
I just want to get this plan together before spring.
You and 13 other people.
You only got 13?
Well, there's more than...
Well, 13 on the board.
Okay, I guess that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
You got to vote on it?
Yeah. We already did.
No, I think you got interrupted, but you were saying all in favor, and then Supervisor Partie had a question.
We'll vote on this resolution, all in favor. I. All opposed. Motion carried. No, I think I'm at the end of my committee meeting.
You have another presentation, or?
No. No, Aaron's coming up under...
Ag and tourism.
Planning and stuff.
Well, you're adjourned.
I'm adjourned.
Very good. Thank you.
I think they want the screen down, Bob.
I'll meet, or no?
Oh, yeah. This is under planning, oh, you're under planning and development, okay. Next meeting, Committee meeting, the planning, development, agriculture, and tourism. Chairman Barnhart.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a presentation from Aaron at Soil and Water. Take it away.
Hi, Richard. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Aaron Perazzini. I'm the district manager at Seneca County Soil and Water. I've been at Soil and Water for 24 years. I started as a district technician, kind of managing some of the non-ag work with municipalities and landowners on the lakefront, helping obtain permits. I really appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight, and actually, Ian's presentation was a great lead-in and tie-in to the validity of soil and water. And we had this presentation... And we had this presentation actually planned before COVID hit, and we were sidelined with that. And now with all the weed concerns, Soil and Water Board felt that it was beneficial. Thank you. Well, it was beneficial to kind of address some of those concerns as well as providing just a broad spectrum about Soil and Water. So just a little bit of history on Soil and Water districts and how we were formed in the 19, sorry, early, late 19, can't even see the screen. In the late 1930s, as a result of the Dust Bowl, FDR passed an act that established the Soil and Water Conservation Service, which is now the Natural Resource Conservation Service through USDA, and is a partner of Soil and Water. And then as a few years kind of went by, there was more need developed and there was transition to move to more of a state-led program and need for a conduit for soil and water conservation. And then in the 1940s, New York State identified a need for locally-led need for soil and water. On December, sorry, does somebody have a question? On December 27th, 1940, this board created the Soil and, Seneca County Soil and Water District, and we were the eighth district in the state to be formed. We are governed, just a little bit on how we're governed, the residents elect few people and as well as the governor, the county board of legislature actually determines and appoints the soil, the people who are on the Soil and Water Board. The governor then is elected by the residents as well, and then they appoint who is on the board for the state Soil and Water Conservation Committee. So that state Soil and Water Conservation Committee through Ag and Markets and our Soil and Water Conservation District help guide the staff at Soil and Water. And then we have two professional associations that also provide training and professional development for our staff. So our Board of Directors is set up, we have five board members, it's set up with two supervisors, Mike Reynolds and Jeff Trow. We have a Grange member who is Lacy Friar, I'm sorry, a Grange member who is John Hunt, a Farm Bureau member who is Lacy Friar, and a member-at-large who is Chuck Sumner. Most of them are here tonight. We have three staff members, myself and two technicians. We typically have a principal account clerk or bookkeeper, that position is vacant right now, so I am actually holding both of those positions. We also, so we are guided by our Board of Directors, and then we work with all of these agencies within the county. Some of them are agricultural agencies, some of our state agencies, and some are watershed groups. We're located in a USDA building right on 5 and 20. We've had a longstanding history partnership with the USDA Natural Resource Conservation Service. They provide our housing and provide just some of our like operational services and support. We also have two maintenance buildings that the Soil and Water District owns here in Waterloo, is where our weed harvesters and other pieces of equipment are stored. Our mission and our primary purpose at Soil and Water is to improve and protect the land and water-related resources of Seneca County. We have the ability to plan as well as implement. A little bit on our funding structure, we have two primary funding sources, New York State and the county. New York State offers funding through New York State Ag and Markets. We have three kind of funding sources through them, performance-based funding that helps provide support for our staff and operational support. We also receive funding through the Ag Environmental Management Program that also provides support for staff, also provides implementation funds. And then we also receive competitive grant funds. There's also New York State DEC, we get competitive grants from them, and there's a Finger Lakes Lake Ontario Watershed Protection Alliance, because we are in the Lake Ontario watershed, we receive funding through them, that is what actually pays for our harvesting program. And then we receive county appropriations from you, thank you, that provide and pay for our staff and our general operations. And then as Ian spoke about earlier, we actually receive funding through federal sources, and we work with watershed groups to receive grant funds as well. So just a little bit more on our funding, the yellow and red portion, which is less than 20%, goes to, all of our funding goes to our staff and operational support. And then over 80% of our funding in the green and blue goes to implementation of best management practices in the county. So over the last 10 years, we've acquired more than $5 million, that has, 100% of that $5 million has gone to implementation in Seneca County. We have four primary program areas, ag, non-ag, education, technical assistance services and programs. Again, our, some of our funding sources comes through Ag and Markets. If farmers want to receive grant funds, they have to participate in the Ag Environmental Management Program. It's a statewide, locally-led and implemented program, it is voluntary, they don't have to participate in it, but if they want the money, they have to go through that process. It's a planning process, it's a tiered approach. We work with the farmers to do questionnaire and worksheets that help identify and prioritize issues on the farm, and we then apply for funding, and if we receive that funding, we work through implementation. And then there's always an evaluation phase, we don't ever walk away, the evaluation is always, it's continuing. So some of, I just want to show you a sampling of some of the projects that we have implemented, they're all best management practices, and that we follow USDA standards and classifications, and they're all signed up by New York State license engineers. This is a, so we do some nutrient management, it's a manure storage facility. This allows the farmer to store the manure through the winter months with the intent to spread it as a crop nutrient additive when the conditions are more optimal. Another form of nutrient management is a manure compost facility. As you can see in the before pictures, the manure is just kind of stockpiled and then leaches off into our waters and into our lakes. So these are also manure storage facilities, but they're typically for smaller farms, and they consist of a concrete pad, and then any rainfall or precipitation that falls on that will collect leachate that flows off from the concrete pad and goes into a vegetated treatment area. And that is kind of, the best I can equate it to is a leach field for a septic system, but it's above ground and it's a much larger area than your leach field. So we also work with farmers to do more nutrient management, like silage leachate collection, again, it's a concrete pad. As that leachate comes off from the feed, it is collected again on the concrete pad and treated in. We do barnyards and have reuse area protection, so with the core pictures, you can see that the area is, they're for high-traffic areas, it's kind of trampled. By implementing these concrete pads, it keeps the area neat and clean, keeps the animals healthy, but also allows the farmer to kind of manage the manure a little bit better. And the runoff then again goes into a vegetated treatment area. We write grazing plans for producers who like to graze their animals. The grant funds that we provide pay for fencing, perimeter fencing and interior fencing. We also do a lot of fencing animals out of streams to keep the animals out of the waterways, and we implement crossings as well as watering systems. So when they're fenced out of the streams, they don't have a water, water source anymore, so we provide the water systems as well. We do a lot of work with vineyards in the area, there's a couple different projects we've worked on, because we've worked with them to do some mulching, which helps retain moisture and prevent erosion. We've done some cover cropping, again, prevent erosion prevention. It also helps with soil health, which is good for the crops. We've done some secondary fuel containment that helps prevent any sort of fuel contamination. We've purchased sprayer modifications, so equipment that would help prevent drift and better efficiencies for spraying. We purchased weather stations that allows the farmer to adjust the weather conditions and pick a better time for spraying and potentially prevent drift and to use less quantity of spray material. And then we've also constructed agrochemical mixing facilities, which allows the producer to store their chemicals, but also mix in a safe place in the event that there's a spill, it can be collected and taken care of properly. We do a lot of erosion control projects here in Seneca County. These are grass waterways, grass waterway is a conveyance of water to a stable outlet, so it's permanently vegetated, it allows, when we do have those precipitation events, it allows the water to pass through there, but prevents those erosion and soil loss issues. We also construct diversions, diversions are like an earthen channel, but they're constructed across the slope and they break up that slope, which then slows the velocity and prevents erosion as well. We've done quite a few water and sediment control basins, those are also earthen basins across the slope for minor, like smaller watercourses, and they trap sediment and detain the floodwaters and then disperse it into a safe outlet. We've done a few detention basins lately because of the extreme storm events that we've been experiencing. These basins store that runoff water and then it's just a mechanism to control the stormwater and trap sediments and nutrients. So we've done a lot with soil health and crop management, we've been, we've got three current cover crop grants right now, and we're also working with farmers on tillage management, we promote strip cropping when it's necessary, and we've received a couple irrigation grants as well, and we provide soil health education programs. This is a herbaceous buffer, it's gone into permanent seeding, prevents erosion and better filtration from the agricultural field. As mentioned, we also do some non-ag work with municipalities and landowners, so the work that we do with municipalities primarily consists with hydro seeding, so when the town or highway departments go out and clean the ditches, we will follow back up with hydro seeding at no cost to the municipality. We do the same thing for road bank stabilization, so in the event there's an erosion issue in a road bank, we obtain grant funds to pay for the rock and the highway departments install that to help prevent erosion, stabilize the roadbanks and slow the water down as well. So we work with a couple municipalities on culvert design and implementation. We'll either design the culverts, size them for them, we'll help them install them, and sometimes we can assist with grant funding. In general, those culverts are smaller size, we don't have the engineering capabilities to do bridges or anything like that. So we also do some stream bank stabilization. These stabilize the stream banks and slow the water velocity, but they also keep, prevent erosion and keep soil from entering our lakes. This is a recent stream restoration work that we did on a Finger Lakes Land Trust property. We partnered with the Land Trust and the US Fish and Wildlife Service to restore the stream bed back to natural conditions. We use natural stream materials and design methodology to help slow the velocity, stabilize the stream, and again, prevent erosion and soil loss from entering our lakes. We do a lot of educational work, which includes events for kids, there's an Envirothon that we do annually, that the kids that participate with that, and then each, each winner of each county goes on to a state competition. We do a couple educational events for the school, we work with our partner agencies, extension, cooperative extension to provide some other educational, adult education regarding soil health, rain barrel workshops, water quality, farming practices and things like that. And then we've been working with watershed groups also to, on program development and informational brochures. We do a lot of tours and events, we actually, again, with our cooperative extension and other ag agencies in the county, we conduct an annual ag tour for the Board of Supervisors, so please keep an eye out for next year. And then we provide some technical assistance services and programs. There's a ag value assessment program, so if you own ag land in the county, you can receive an exemption on that property, a tax exemption on the property. Soil and Water will work through that soil root worksheet to identify what soils are on the parcel, and then that information will be used to calculate the exemption received on that tax parcel. We also provide GIS data and survey, I'm sorry, GIS data and maps for soils, aerial imagery, wetlands, tax parcel information, a variety of information using GIS. Because we're flanked by the two Finger Lakes, we have a tremendous need for permit assistance. We will mark mean high water level, which is the jurisdictional level that New York State DEC and Army Corps have on the two lakes. We will mark that for landowners, sometimes those are, those are needed if you're going to request a permit for all kids, stocks or shorewales, or sometimes the towns will require them if you have a building permit. And then we will also offer full permit assistance as well, so we'll come out and mark mean high, and we'll work through that permitting process to acquire a permit from DEC, so the landowner can implement stabilization practices on the lakefront. We do a lot of stormwater management and go out and work with landowners just to provide technical assistance for drainage issues, stormwater or flooding issues, as well as erosion. We will provide pond sighting, design maintenance recommendations, we'll work with rural fire protection, rural, sorry, rural fire departments to design and install dry hydrants for fire protection. And then we also offer an annual tree and shrub sale at our maintenance buildings in the spring, and we sell a variety of conservation sale items at our office. We also own, I'm sorry, own, we hold easements to over 30 miles of county drainage projects, and we're responsible for going and maintaining those. And that will be, because it's an easement, that will be a forever thing. And that drainage provides outlets to agriculture as well as roads and highways. And the one you're all been waiting for is the aquatic plant harvesting program. We have been operating that since I believe 1986 with funding that we received from New York State. So we typically operate in the northern end of Cuyahoga Lake, the canal from Oak Island to the Seneca Lake State Park Marina. And then we also do, I think Ian mentioned this as well, but we also work with the Finger Lakes Prism to do water chestnut hand pull every year, trying to keep that in there. So weeds in Cuyahoga Lake are a historical problem. This is something that we've been facing, like I said, our harvesting program started in the 1980s. So those pictures there from 88 and 2007. Part of that, part of the reason for the weed problem, the aquatic plant growth in the north end of Cuyahoga Lake is from a couple different factors. So one, the watershed you see, the map on the left, is Cuyahoga Lake watershed, it's comprised of over 500,000 acres, starting south of Ithaca, going all the way over starting south of Ithaca, going all the way over to Cortlandt County. So all of the water that falls on that watershed ends up flowing through Keogee Lake, through the north end of the lake, and into the canal. All of the nutrients and sediments that's in that water end up kind of funneling through that area as well. And that water has been flowing there for 17,000 years since the glaciers left. So we've been receiving that, those sediments for that amount of time. And those sediments have created nutrient-rich sediment layers that are optimal for weed growth in the north end of the lake. And because of that sediment, the water is shallower. And shallower waters also eat mean warmer temperatures. There's a couple of other factors as well that kind of lead to that, lead to those issues. One is lake levels. There's some invasive plant issues as well as the impact that invasive mussels also have on weed growth and water quality in the lake. So like I mentioned, the watershed is comprised of over 500,000 acres. The picture on the left is Ithaca, the south end of the lake. All of those sediments and nutrients, again, flow to the north end of the lake and funnel down as they hit the north end of Keogee Lake. And as they, as they hit that area, they kind of drop those suspended solids in that north portion. And it's probably exacerbated by the fact that the railroad tracks are there and the canal system. So as mentioned, in 1984, the Aquatic Vegetation Control Program was created in the Finger Lakes. It was comprised of just a few counties. And in 1986, Seneca County acquired enough funding to purchase a weed harvester. That wasn't keeping the, and that program actually started because of Eurasian watermilk oil, which is an invasive species. And the weed harvester wasn't keeping that at bay. So they actually introduced an aquatic moth to Keogee Lake to help fight the, or combat the Eurasian watermilk oil. So in 1994, that Aquatic Vegetation Control Program transitioned into the Finger Lakes Lake Ontario Watershed Protection Alliance, which then opened it up to the 25 counties that make up that watershed, which then split the funding sources more ways, which meant less funding for Seneca County. In 2007, we purchased the existing aquamarine weed harvester, weed harvester. And we also purchased in 2012 another harvester, a smaller harvester for, intended for the canal. So in 2018, late 2018, I became manager. When the current manager retired, he said that that harvester, the bigger harvester that goes into Keogee Lake, needed repairs. We assessed it. We worked through, we started scheduling that for 2019 to be repaired. But it wasn't going to be repaired in time for the harvesting season. So our board, the Soil and Water Conservation District Board, decided to hire Keogee County Soil and Water to do the harvesting for 2019. Our harvester was repaired and it's sitting in our barn as a like backup Plan B in the event that we needed. So our board was so, I guess, impressed with Keogee County because they have a much larger machine and a transport barge. They did what we do all summer long in about two weeks, and they cost about half the amount of money. So they were efficient and cost effective. So our board determined that it was better to continue to hire Keogee County than use an inefficient weed harvester in Keogee Lake. We continued to operate in the canal. And then in 2022, we, Keogee County Soil and Water was contracted to operate in Keogee Lake. But similar to our office, they were experiencing some of the same issues. They have aging equipment and their equipment kept breaking down. They were actually scheduled to be here the first or second week of August. We moved our conveyor to Keogee Lake State Park in anticipation of them showing up. And they just had one mechanical failure after another and weren't able to come. Our board, and through communications with Supervisor Cronenweiler, our board elected that by the time they had kind of gotten their harvester repaired, which was late August, we decided that it was better off just to save our funds and move forward with a plan for the following year. So having known what we know now, we probably would have tried putting our harvester into Keogee Lake to try and make a dent with the weeds that we were experiencing this year. Anybody have any questions?
I just got one here. On a small harvester that goes from Oak Island West, during canal days, do you think you could go east to at least Van Cleef Lake?
Yes, I think that's something that needs to happen too.
Because the canal looked pretty-
Yeah, I've noticed it a couple-
-ratty during canal days.
Yeah. So when, what is, there's a lot of factors that go into where these operate. But we have to have a proper launching spot and a place that would be conducive to put the conveyor as well. So if we were going to harvest in the canal near Seneca Falls, we would probably have to launch in Waterloo and come through the locks, which is, would take probably an hour of transport time to get there. And then we're going to have to work out a location.
Erin, thank you for the presentation. I don't really, I care about canal days, but Paul asked the same question that I was going to ask, whether it's canal days or not, we should hopefully try to get that cleaned. I would suggest taking a look at our community center. We have a boat launch there. Probably not big enough, my guess.
Right, correct.
You've already checked, okay.
I already looked at that.
Okay. Do you have any idea of what kind of participation you get from our Mennonite citizens and our Amish citizens, these types of programs?
More over the last few years. So we will actually provide technical support and recommendations to quite a few of them. But after, over the last few years, they've actually been more open to receiving funds and implementing projects.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions for Erin?
A side note, we're happy to sit in on the committee you talked about earlier.
Mr. Shipley.
You couldn't see me over here. Erin, thank you so much for coming in tonight and give us a presentation of just what you handle. My goodness, you have quite a grocery list of all the facets your organization is responsible for. And I think we're all here tonight to help you whatever way we can, whether it's work together with the county as far as getting a better handle on these weeds to be harvested and getting them out of here.
Soil and water is prepared. The board has made, you know, is open to and prepared to continue as we've been doing and continue to hire Keogee County Soil and Water to do the harvesting in Keogee Lake. But we can't really do anything more with the existing resources and funds that we have. So if the Board of Supervisors wants to support those actions, then we can move forward with something more robust. I will add too, Keogee County Soil and Water is purchasing or has purchased a new harvester. And they will have two harvesters. They're going to keep the old one and operate the new one, which is exactly what we would be looking at if we were purchasing one.
When is the last time they actually harvested weeds in Keogee Lake?
They harvested this year on their side of the lake.
Their side?
Yes. Last year, I think it was August sometime. I don't have that in my notes, but it was August of last year when they harvested. And we've been harvesting for 34 years. This is the first year with a series of issues that came up that they were not able, or we were not able to harvest.
Yeah, I don't think we had quite the severity of problems last year, did we, Paul?
No, they harvested last year. Keogee County harvested last year.
Well, yes, but I think the fact that we had, it was very warm this year, which, you know, warmer temperatures increase weed growth, and the lake levels were down, which I think exacerbated the visual issue of the-
Right, on top of the water.
Erin, how soon can weed harvesting actually begin?
We typically start in, right around the Fourth of July, which is kind of when people's, the main boating season starts. The weeds don't always start to grow then. So I know in your resolution, you started, recommended May 1st.
Well, that's-
Weeds aren't growing then.
That's to have everything in place.
Okay, it said implemented. So that makes it sound like you want them harvested May 1st.
Well, I don't, you know, there probably won't be any weeds to harvest May 1st. But also, the end of August-
Right.
Is too late. You know, I mean, that's the end of the season. September 4th or whenever Labor Day is, that's when the people take their boats out.
Yeah, Keogee County harvests in all sorts of different lakes. And so we are subject to their schedule if we hire them.
Erin, if we, if you, so when you go and harvest something, how long before it grows back?
There's a lot of factors. It depends on what the temperatures are. It depends on if there's been nutrient inputs or the clarity of the water, or the impact of the zebra mussels, or the lake level. There's a lot of factors.
And then also, to your point, very good presentation. The, if the sediment is dumping in from the canal, if it's coming from south to north, long term, shouldn't it be dredged? I mean, isn't this going to eventually fill in?
I believe that that was proposed in the 70s or 80s to dredge the north end of the lake.
Long term, there won't be a north side of the lake anymore.
No, anyway.
Well, I mean, I'm just thinking, so you've got Marazuma, which is marsh, which is sediment, right? I mean, that's there because, so eventually, so long term, there needs to be a solution that's more than just weed harvesting. Because it's not, weed harvesting isn't going to-
Cover program.
Right, well, right, exactly. And the sediment.
We are so heavily focused on implementing best management practices that keep the nutrients out of the lake to begin with.
Right, and the sediment.
I don't think we will ever, we won't ever solve the weed problem at the north end of Keogee Lake. It has historically been like that. And it will, because of the nutrient-rich sediments, it will continue to be like that. So weed harvesting is just a Band-Aid approach.
But it's a necessary Band-Aid.
Right, that's what I was thinking.
Even, they even dredged out the harbor at Keogee Lake State Park, the metal railings. I got pictures where the cattails are out here and there's a sign that says, "No overnight docking," you know? But they got an excavator down there and they actually mucked that out. What was that?
Erin, if you've got any free time, I need some accounting help in the town, so.
I am not trained in that, but I have picked up some skills, so.
Erin, thank you so much for coming in. And we're all here together to work with you to help tackle this problem.
Supervisor Heisen, Erin, hold on just one moment, please.
The first year we went out for bids for a harvester back in 1985 or '86, the person from someplace else came in and harvested the weed. Have you considered seeking out bids from other people?
I have actually, thank you for bringing that up. There are two actual, there are two private harvesting companies that I am aware of. I called both of them. I received one bid from one of them. They're from Madison County. They have a smaller machine than our smallest machine, and they gave me a quote for $20,000. But they are, they are for hire by private individuals. So if whatever gets decided with Soil and Water or the county, they could be a potential option for private landowners.
If you go out further, maybe 500 miles away or something, you might be able to find a bigger harvester?
I don't know. I can look, but I think the price is going to go up. So we hire Keogee County Soil and Water. On average, we spent $8,000 to hire them. Like I said, that quote we received was $20,000.
How much, how many acres of weeds does Keogee County do for you percentage-wise?
I don't know the acres right off. But they essentially harvest from Pump House Road down to about Canoga Creek, and they cut channels out into a little bit deeper water.
They don't do the whole thing, they just basically cut channels.
Correct, yeah, yeah. It's not a solid, yeah.
Mr. Cronenweiler.
They did a pretty good job when, you know, when they were operating. But if you go on AquaticWeadHarvester.com, you'll see a whole list of weed harvesters in all different prices and sizes and-
Available?
Yeah, I sent the, I sent the link to the Board of Supervisors and to you, I believe. And, you know, you can get the biggest, baddest, all the bells and whistles for $223,000 instead of $500,000. So it's, there's other options out there. There's a lot of them in the country. And this one was from Canada, actually. But for a quarter million dollars, you know, we want to look around.
And-
We got this one from Michigan.
It's nicer to have somebody a little local that can help us work on them and maintain them.
I don't have a lot of trust in a guy that says this was designed so it could never be repaired. I mean, that's just the most absurd statement I ever heard.
Any other questions? Thank you, Erin.
Thank you.
Thanks, Erin.
You want me to wait?
Done with the screen, right?
I don't know how this-
Not working.
Man, wait, you're the chairman, wave us magic wand. Let's go, get that thing turned on.
We'll get IT in here.
Turn it off, raise the screen. Yeah, there you go, just like that. You only got part of it done, part of the job. I'll put a spotlight in everybody.
I'll give him a minute, I'll give him a minute.
Basically, you're not going to win.
Arpa money, Arpa. Money needs to come, please.
But they also have a very large pond acreage base in the east. And that's what they just built, and they're on the river.
Folks, back to the business at hand. We have a next issue in front of us to appoint members to the Finger Lakes Regional Airport Advisory Committee. These members would be David Hames, Earl Martin, and Hunter Mullen. Is there a motion and a second?
Motion.
Motion from Mr. Hayes, second from Mr. Trout, I believe I heard. Yep. Ms. Henry, hello.
Hello. Yeah, this is just a housekeeping action. We have three members that need to be reappointed, and that's what's in front of you.
Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Last issue tonight. Supervisors request New York State Commissioner of Agriculture and Markets to recertify Agricultural District Number Six. Is there a motion and a second?
Second.
Motion from Mr. Hayes. Second from Ms. Partey, I think I heard, sorry, Don.
No problem.
Yep.
Yes, okay. You know, back in February of '22, the board did adopt the Ag Cultural and Farmland Enhancement Plan. And rolling off of that, we started to use the recommendations and strategies and priorities as we started to review our ag districts, which are required to be done. Ag markets requires a periodic review of that. So over the past six months, we've been reviewing the Northern District, which is Ag Culture District Six. We've contacted all the property owners. We've also met with, sent, we sent the letters to the property owners, and we've met with planning boards and town boards receiving the recommendations. So we've ultimately came up with the recommendations that were also passed through the Ag Enhancement Board. And you have the map in front of you. So you can see that the properties in red are properties that are coming out. There is a land that a property owner contacted us and wanted to have it put in. So that is what we've done there. And we've also need to go through the seeker process. Attached is a, the Ag and Markets seeker form. So it may look a little different than what you're used to. But ultimately, the recommendation would be that there would be no significant impact. And so we would be setting ourselves up for a public meeting on November 8th for any input from the community and then hopefully action from the board on that evening.
Thank you. Any questions? I like the map, but I am colorblind and can't tell the difference between the two latter districts. I like the map, but I am colorblind and can't tell the difference between the two latter districts. No idea.
All right, I will.
So good luck to those of you getting added to the district. Anything else from Ms. Henry tonight? Thank, uh, Mr. Shipley.
Quick question, are we still on for the, uh, meeting with the FAA tomorrow?
Yes, I sent you an email this afternoon, so yes, we are.
Okay, I haven't checked my emails.
There you go.
Busy, busy being retired.
Noon time, right?
Uh, twelve-thirty and earlier at twelve here, just to get ourselves on the same page.
Okay, Heroes?
We'll meet up here, probably here at twelve tomorrow, in this room.
Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, just one point, I wanted to, whenever I get the opportunity, I wanted to thank Jill and Joe McGrath. They were helping the town of F A A apply for a round two grant with the New York Revitalization and they took their time to sit in on a Zoom with us with MRB. And I'm very, very appreciative because they're very helpful in helping us to deal with, um, housing issues in the hamlet and making it a better place to live. So I just want to publicly thank Jill and Joe. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're here. Any unfinished business before this committee? Any new business? Planning Development Ag and Tourism is adjourned. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you Supervisor Reinhardt. Next up, Public Works, Chairman D. Trout.
Thank you Chairman. First up, Marshall Road Bridge New York Resolution Authorizing Implication and Funding of the Cost of a Hundred Percent of the Cost of Transportation Project, which may be eligible for federal aid and/or state aid or reimbursement from Bridge New York Funds. A motion and a second?
Motion. Second.
Motion, second, discussion, Mitch.
The board and committee may recall that this project, um, has had resolutions of approval to move forward when, uh, when Roy and I, uh, sent the resolution and the documents back. It was, uh, pointed out, uh, to me by Nasda Region Three that there were, um, there was some language that wasn't in the resolution, particularly the one that the project shall begin no later than twenty-four months after award and, and construction will be completed within thirty months. So this is a, I own it, my bad, a cleanup resolution just to get everything that Nasda needs to have in there so we can, uh, continue to proceed.
Okay. Any questions? Motion made and probably second, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Issue two, Proposed Sewer District Number Four Map, Plan, and Report Resolution by Senate County Board of Supervisors. Got a motion and a second?
Motion. Second.
A motion and a second, Mitch.
So this is the next phase in the creation of Sewer District Number Four. Reminder for everybody that it is the four-fourteen line that the board, the county accepted title and ownership to, um, a bit ago. Uh, County Attorney Edman and I have been working with hunt engineers on the development of the map plan and report. Um, last cycle, um, there was a resolution to take care of the seeker. So again, this is the next step and includes, um, setting up a public hearing as we continue with the district formation.
Questions? None. Motion made and probably second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Issue three, Authorized Agreement Would Johnsonite Architects Develop Bids for Specifications and Solicit Bids for Senate County Department of Human Services? Phase Four, Public Defender's Office and Finance Department Renovations. A motion and a second?
Motion. Second.
Motion made and seconded, Bob.
Yeah, phase four, so we're, we're, this is going to be the last phase for DHS rolling in through the FMP. We'll be moving on next to a couple of other projects as soon as we can get our FMP committee back together. So, um, things are going really good downstairs. Phase ones opened up, were occupied. Phase two were occupied in and now we're in phase three. Phase three is moving along really quick. This should be done before the first of the year.
Good.
With the exception of door slabs, of course, anything with glass and wood takes forever to get here, so.
Questions for Bob? From the committee, from the board? Motion made and probably second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thanks, Bob. Last item, Proposed Local Law E of two thousand and twenty-two to repeal and replace Senate County Local Law Number Six of two thousand and twenty-one, Updating Operations and Authority of the Senate County Code Enforcement Unit for the Administration and Enforcement of the New York State Uniform Fire Prevention and Building Code and the State Energy Conservation Construction Code in the County of Seneca and repealing all our prior local laws related thereto and providing for a public hearing.
Motion.
Second. Motion made and seconded, I'm sure everybody read it. It was a nice light read. Who wants to speak, Dave?
Uh, we, we took the information we got back from, Mark and I, Shaw took the information we got back from Albany. Not really sure how we had some gaps, but we took care of it and circulated that back to Mitch. And I don't think anybody else wanted to check it. We identified all the loose ends, all of the changes. It's good, it's, it's consistent with what we have been doing. It cleans up a little bit on the, uh, violations and enforcement, make that a little clearer. And, uh, it did incorporate the new energy code issues. Those are the highlights.
Okay, so we're all according to Hoyle now? All right. Um, any questions?
Actually, I have a couple. Why is the County Code Enforcement Office regulating vehicles? The mobile food preparation vehicles?
Basically don't.
Okay.
It's a provision.
So we're adding it?
And we simply rely on the National Fire Code to deal with that.
Okay. Definition for high piled combustible storage? How do you define high? It's very vague and subjective, I'm just asking.
That's what they gave us. I, I want to tell you the answer, basically wraps back around to the national, to the fire code. And they provided.
And definition of an air-supported temporary membrane structure? Is that a bounce house?
Uh, no, it's not a bounce house. It's more along the lines of the old, uh, scene over at Hobart when they had the bubbles, the large tentacle, uh, that's an air membrane supported structure.
Okay.
At this point, I don't believe Seneca County has it. And at the time, the old, uh, talk about it, something that never happened. And the power college.
Good? Okay. Anyone else? Motion made and probably second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Any new business? Old business adjourned.
Very good. Thank you Supervisor Trout. Next up, Technology Chairman Burnell.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Board of Supervisors accept FY two thousand and twenty cybersecurity grant. The grant is worth fifteen thousand, seven hundred and six dollars, eighty-seven cents.
So moved. Second.
Uh, this is similar to last year's cybersecurity grant. Uh, different projects this year that we were approved on for offline backups and two-factor authentication. Any questions?
Any questions? That? Here a motion?
I move. Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Any unfinished business in this? Any new business? Yeah, we're adjourned then, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you Supervisor. Okay, next up, Public Health Services Chairman, Vice Chairman Enslo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Call the Public Health Services Committee to Order. We have three issues tonight. First issue is County Manager to Authorize and Direct to Sign a Contract with New York State Department of Health for Early Intervention Administration Grant. Can I get a motion?
Make a motion.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Scott?
Thank you, uh, so this is a housekeeping grant. Our early intervention program, you know, helps connect families, um, who have children uh, with disabilities or developmental delays with the services that they need, such as, you know, speech therapy, physical therapy and whatnot. Um, I wish, I'd like to say that this grant is more than last year, but this one has not gone up. It's the same amount as last year. Um, and I just thought you'd be interested to know that at any given time, we average seventy to seventy-five children in the EI program. Of course fluctuates, but on an average, that's about how many we typically have. Uh, we use this grant to cover part of the EI manager's salary and, um, offset a little bit of time for a staff resource assistant to help manage the program.
Thank you, Scott. Any questions for Scott? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, we're going a little out of order. Issue number two, which is actually, uh, three on your paper. Uh, County Manager Authorized and Directed to Sign a Contract with New York State Department of Health for the Extension of the N Y S Public Health Corp's P H C Fellowship Program. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second? Thank you. Scott?
Thank you, um, for taking these a little bit out of order at my request here. I did that because, uh, this, um, resolution leads into the next one. Uh, so the Public Health Corps Grant, uh, we originally, this county originally accepted back in September of two thousand and twenty-one. Um, and it was to run through July thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. They've now offered us what we call a no-cost extension, no additional money. Um, however, they are offering to extend that grant through June of two thousand and twenty-four. Um, there is quite a bit of money left in this, plenty to take it through that. Right now, we're utilizing this grant to pay for a Public Health Corps Fellow. Uh, that fellow has been housed and placed in our environmental division primarily. We utilize her to, um, assist with our neuroseptic law. Uh, she also works all the COVID clinics and things of that nature. Uh, and this grant is also slated to, if I can ever find one, uh, pay for our Director of Preventive Health Services. Uh, so the grant is, has proven worthwhile because I will say our fellow, she's doing great work. And so we'd like to accept this extension of the grant.
Sounds good. Any other questions for Scott? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, issue number three, Agreement with S two A Y Rural Health Network for New York State Public Health Corps Fellowship Program. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second? Scott?
So we subcontract with Say or Pivotal now. They're currently going by both names as they work through a name change. Um, and Pivotal technically is the employer for that fellow that is working in our environmental division. Um, that way, if, for when this grant comes to an end, um, or, you know, um, if we don't create a position or retain her or that type of thing or any other fellows we might have, um, if they go on to somewhere else, uh, we're, we're not going to be paying unemployment for that in the meantime. So it's kind of pass-through money, um, that technically she is an employee of Pivotal or the Say Rural Health Network, but she's housed with us and she does work for the residents of Seneca County for the Health Department. So we just want to, we already have an existing contract with Say or Pivotal for these services. And so we'd like to extend that to match the extension of the grant.
Any other questions for Scott? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any unfinished business for this committee? Any new business? Public Health Services stands adjourned, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you Supervisor Enslo. Next up is, uh, Public Safety Supervisor Reinhardt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have three issues tonight. The first is a resolution introduce local law F of the year two thousand and twenty-two to provide for a public hearing, uh, on the social host law. This is the one that's been kicking around in committee, uh, for several months now. Uh, we made the corrections that we felt were needed. Uh, Mr. Edman assures me that we're on solid ground with this. So it's time to bring this through committee, one way or the other. Are there any questions?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Yes, I'm sorry.
I did not put the date in because I wasn't sure I was going to track. We do need a date for the, uh, public hearing. We added it to the end of the resolution. All right, so that, we could do that on the, uh, November date.
Uh, it's the. Eighth. Eighth.
Yep. Someone could amend to add that date and we can proceed.
Do I have to make the motion in the second and then amend it? Or amend it?
It needed to be amended before you adopted.
Okay. So is anybody would like to make that amendment?
I'll make a motion to amend to the eighth of November.
Thank you.
Second.
Second. With a motion properly motioned and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Thank you. Second issue, Senate County Board of Supervisors Approves Accepting the Two Thousand and Twenty-One, Two Thousand and Twenty-Two Public Safety Answering Point Operations Grant and Purchase a New Spillman Server Including the Data Migration. So basically, we're accepting a grant and then spending it at the same time.
Motion. Second.
Melissa?
Okay, so this grant is for a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars. Uh, we receive it every year. Uh, it's for nine-one-one center expenses essentially. Uh, so we're going to use seventeen thousand dollars for our new spillman server because it is obsolete. Um, it's reached the end of life and we can't even do any updates on it anymore. Uh, and then the migration from the old server to the new server, plus something called ASAP to PSAP, which basically, um, helps, uh, the Office for the Aging and, and the elderly in our communities who have the medical, uh, life alert buttons. Because what this will do is instead of them pressing that button and it going to, um, a, uh, a company, an alarm company who then notifies the nine-one-one center, what will happen is it will come directly into the nine-one-one center. We'll know exactly where they're, where they are to get them help a little bit faster, so. And then the rest of the grant will be used, uh, to offset the county costs for salaries, which is forty-nine thousand dollars.
Thank you, Melissa. Any questions? With a motion made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Thank you. Number three, Authorized Contract for the two thousand and twenty-three with Motorola Solutions for Radio Maintenance and Repair for the nine-one-one center.
Score. Second. Second. Thank you.
Melissa?
Okay, so this is, um, our annual maintenance contract that we have with Motorola Solutions. Uh, they are our sole, um, provider of this service because our entire system is a Motorola system. Um, it is a three percent increase from the two thousand and twenty-two contract, which I thought was a modest increase. It basically, they have twenty-four-seven, uh, maintenance and service and repairs and replacement of all of our equipment. Um, at six tower sites, uh, the primary nine-one-one center and, um, the backup center. So, uh, basically twenty-four-seven. To give you an example, if we had to replace one of those radios, it's between sixty and seventy thousand dollars. A microwave hop is a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And our system right now is seven years old, so it is aging. So it's really important to be able to have, um, a contract in place.
Any other questions from Melissa? I think it's worth noting that I did talk to Melissa about this at length and she kind of went to battle to keep the price down. So I think that, uh, needs to be noted. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any unfinished business? Any new business for this committee? With nothing further, Public Safety is adjourned, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you Supervisor Reinhardt. Next up, Indian Affairs Supervisor Shipley.
Thank you Chairman Heisen. Uh, to the best of my knowledge, the Indian Affairs Committee has no new business before our committee tonight. So I'll open it up to the other committee members. Is there anything that has been missed that you would like to bring forward?
All's quiet. A night off without Indians. Move on.
Well, they took the, uh, fruit stand off the tax rolls on the corner of eighty-nine and Baird Street.
Yes, they did.
A bandit.
What, was there asbestos there or something?
There was, uh, that was the former cigarette place, uh, the old Bodie and Fruit Farm. Uh, that's now, uh, at the landfill. Uh, they tore it down and, uh, so that's going to be their, uh, new, uh, center to just, uh, to sell marijuana, mainly out of that. Uh, they're moving the facility back further and creating more parkard in the front. And I will note, uh, that it was done without a permit from the county or from the town of Seneca Falls.
And you know that?
It's been, um, well, up until that point, uh, they've been following all the rules. Uh, apparently Clint got up that morning and had a cold or something and, you know, I don't know. But, uh, again, I continue to work with BJ. Uh, she was very upset, uh, and we continue to try to keep the communication going.
Mike, she was upset about what?
That they didn't get to permit.
Oh.
That we've made all kinds of progress to this point and she realized that we took a step backwards. a step backwards. She, I'm not speaking for BJ. I said we took a step backwards.
Right, right. No, I get it.
Yeah.
Doesn't, doesn't it go through her or not? Doesn't? All right.
A lot of it goes through the police department.
I was happy to see that the footprint that they had on the west side of their gas station on the corner of Garden Street, it's just a parking lot. I figured it might be a seven-story casino or something.
No, no, that's just a parking lot.
They paved it yesterday.
Yep. And we did serve notice on 2133 that if they don't pay their water bill, the water's going off.
Thank you, Mike. Unless there's anything else, the Indian Affairs Committee stands adjourned. That's almost a record amount of time for this issue.
Well, Mike's up now. Don't worry.
Knock yourself out.
Thank you Supervisor Shipley. Next up, this will be a quick one. Personnel Supervisor Ferrara.
If you would use your microphone, I would hear what you're saying, but you and the county attorney don't like to use the microphone. So I can never hear one of you guys say.
Mine's probably turned down. Can you hear me?
Now I can hear you.
What? Can you turn them down?
Can you hear me?
No, I can't hear you at all.
Okay. Anyway, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'd like to call the Personnel Committee to order. Laura will be there for any questions, but I don't think there will be any. But certainly feel free to fire away. Issue number one. The Board of Supervisors authorize increased salary for Program Director of Clinical Services. Come a motion in second, please.
Motion.
Thank you. Second.
Second.
Thank you. Basically, this is an increase in step because the manager, or based on the CSE contract, new contract, people that she manages are making more than she is. So we've moved up in the step. Basically, she'll be making roughly what she was making prior to the new CSE contract, the same amount above the people that she's supervising. Any questions here? We have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? So carried. Issue number two. Board of Supervisors amend the second Seneca County Policy Manual to include specific provision for longevity pay for county employees. Come a motion, please.
Motion.
Thank you in a second. Thank you. Basically, we provided, we're looking here to provide the same longevity increases for our management as we did for the CSCA Union when we settled their contract. Again, we, previous month or previous last couple of months, we've moved up the salaries. This is just to be consistent with the CSCA Union. Any questions here? We have a motion in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? So carried. Issue number three. Approval of the 2023 amended municipal cooperative agreement for the Greater Tamkins County Municipal Health Insurance. Come a motion for this, please.
So moved.
Thank you. This is housekeeping work. This belongs to, or the county belongs to this consortium where we purchase our health insurance. I don't think there's anything that really of concern here. Laura, have they, they've not given us the rates yet, right?
They have.
They have. Okay. Do you know what percentage that was?
I do not know.
Okay.
Top of my head.
Mitch, you know what percentage increase?
I believe it was 7% and it has been factored into the 23 budget document.
Which is a very fair.
That's very good.
Increase.
Better than a bunch of the other providers, if not all of them.
Yeah.
Really good.
Yeah. Yeah. Very good.
I can tell you that we did have new, eight new municipalities join the consortium, which.
Helps out.
Helps tremendously.
Okay. We have a motion in second. Any further questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? So carried. Issue number four. Will just require committee approval. It will not need full board approval. I'm a motion to refill a vacancy in the Emergency Management Department 911 Center. Motion, please.
So moved.
Thank you. Second.
Second.
Thank you. Again, this is just a refill of vacancy that's been created. Nothing more, nothing less. The good news during our vacancy committee, I asked Margaret and Melissa how things are going with filling positions and they both said that they're starting to get way more people interested, even some people interested in lateral moves from different counties, which again is helping, the whole purpose of our contracts was to retain and recruit. So I think we were successful. Any questions here? We have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? So carried. Issue number five. Refill vacancy in the Emergency Management Department. Vacancy exists for the following position. One full-time dispatcher. Come a motion for that, please.
So moved.
Second. Thank you. Again, fill in the vacancy, someone's left and we need to move forward on that. Any questions? We have a motion in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? So carried. Is there any unfinished business for this committee?
Or you had one add-on?
I do have one add-on. Right you are. That's why you make the big bucks. We have Personnel Committee, issue number six. Refill vacancy in the Law Department. Come a motion for this, please.
So moved.
In second. This was a late addition. This is for a confidential secretary for Mr. Ettman, who is moving on to a different department in the county. And this will allow Mr. Ettman to start hopefully finding somebody for her replacement. Any questions here? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? So carried. Is there any unfinished business for this committee? Any new business for this committee? Mr. Chairman, this Personnel Committee is adjourned.
Thank you Chairman. Ferrara, can you hear me?
No. Apparently not.
Next up, Finance Assessment Insurance. Chairman Reynolds.
Thank you Chairman Heisen. Issue one. Board of Supervisors adopt 2023 County Budget.
So moved.
You want to adopt?
Second.
What it says?
Moving out of committee so we can adopt it.
Out of committee.
Get out of committee so we can get under the nitty-gritty there.
Okay.
Going to speech on it Mitch?
If I could, I'll.
It's your baby.
Go ahead. Each of you have on your desks a brief PowerPoint presentation. It is at a very high level, not intended to go down in the weeds tonight. The first page is a general fund summary. The first line, you'll see there's a column for the current year, column for the proposed 23, and then a dollar amount and a percentage change. The first line, in terms of general fund appropriations, I will note that the number in the 22 column is the amended amount, not what was in the adopted budget at the beginning of the year. That amount reflects changes that you have adopted through the course of the year. The net change is just under $2 million. The largest chunk of that are the salary increases that you all voted on in the last few months. The next column, the tax levy, the current, the levy for the current year is $10,295,000. The filed tentative budget proposes to move that to $10,715,000, a $420,000 increase, 4%. It is compliant with the New York State Tax Cap requirements principally because last year, the 2.95 million was the same as the year before. So you're allowed a carryover amount for one year. The tax rate, the next column, and I do have a correction for you, the 22 rate at $4.07 per thousand. And of note is that that's for, that's the fully equalized rate. The 381 needs to actually be 379 now. When I had asked Lisa to calculate the fully equalized taxable value for the whole county, all 10 towns, I had given her $10,795,000. I subsequently was able to reduce that down by $80,000 and I failed to circle back with Lisa to ask for the recalculation. So Lisa, thank you for catching that. And again, rather than the 381 on your presentation, it'd be 379. And a reminder that that would be the eighth consecutive year that the fully equalized tax rate has gone down here in spite of the fact that the tentative budget does have a modest levy increase. But basically, even though none of the 10 towns are at 100% equalization, when you do the math, which thank you again Lisa, the taxable value in Seneca County continues to increase. And so even though the levy's proposed to go up a little bit because of that increase in the base, the rate was still able to come down. Next is the tax reduction reserve. A quick reminder to the board and others here and watching, longstanding policy that up to 25% of each of the last four completed fiscal years, any amount that we come in under budget can be, can be applied out, 25% of that over four years. This is, based on my math, the full amount that we can do. It's up a bit over last year, but again, I would say it comes back basically to the salary infringe increases and the need to balance revenue and expenses. Next line, sales tax. We talked a lot during your consideration of salary increases, retain, recruit. In perfect world, I would not put the, I believe we'll hit the 31 million in a perfect world, I would do that a little bit less because worst-case scenario, if something happens with the economy or something happens, you know, the tax levy, you levy it and you're going to get it and, you know, unless you get into foreclosure on a property. I feel reasonably assured, I guess we're just going to have to track if this is the adopted number and this is the way that you adopt the budget. We'll have to keep an eye on that through the course of the year and worst-case scenario, look to try to move some money around. But I, we're on track. Last year, we went over 30 million. We're on track this year to, right now, year-to-date is a million over last year. So that's 31. And if that trend continues.
You're okay.
We should be okay. The next line is the Delago Gaming Revenue. That number went down and Supervisor Partee knows this with COVID and the shutdowns and everything, but those numbers continue to improve. I initially had it at 2.5 million, but Beth and I talked and they, she and her team at the town because we both get the same amount. And they were reasonably confident in the 2.6. So I actually bumped the 2.5 to 2.6 so the town and the county are, our projections are the same. The last I have on the general fund summary is the hotel motel tax and you will see that.
That's a pretty good increase Mitch.
That's a great increase. And again, a reminder that it was, I think just before my return to the county, the board used to be, we projected what it was going to be and then the chamber, as the TPA, had to kind of manage with a certain amount of uncertainty. And then the policy was amended in 17 or 18 that it's the last four known quarters. And so then that gives certainty to the chamber, as the TPA, and to the board as you look at, you know, funding water quality in Cayuga and Seneca Lake and the other things that you do. So 725,45422 is an all-time high. Just for context, when I came to the county first time in '08 as Planning Director, it was 200,000 a year. So kudo. Jeff and I have talked a little bit. I think they had great success with the marketing and stuff that they did. A reminder, and there'll be, the TPA contract will come through probably the next cycle for your consideration, is that the policy is still the last four known quarters, but the county takes a 5% admin charge off, fee off the top and then the 8515 split gets applied from there. So the chamber's actual number is about 585,000. And then the other funds would stay available again for the watershed in both lakes. And if we want to do some more historic markers, the Friends of the Three Bears allocation, which is another one that'll be probably coming next cycle. I'll try to be a little briefer. We have, as I know you know, a number of other funds outside the general fund. They are all, on paper, revenue and expense neutral, so they zero out at the bottom. A few of these is, and I'll hit these all real quick. Some of them require an inter-fund out, transfer out of the general fund and/or some allocation of fund balance. And there are certain funds that by county policy can't go below a certain amount and there are others that are not. So Workforce Development Fund 20, it's a $1.1 million budget. All but 97,000 is accounted for with different federal and state funding sources and other kinds of program income. So there's a, there's a $97,000 general fund support that's built into the general fund budget. County Airport, run by Jill and her team, budget for this year, 444,000. The fund balance there has grown a bit and so as a part of trying to keep a lid on a tax increase, looking at the fund balance, I thought that rather than an inter-fund out of the general fund, that we could take that out of fund balance. It's not one of the ones that has a minimum requirement. And the end of the day, it was originally general fund money to begin with and then when the books close, the money stays in those funds. The water and sewer districts are all balanced by revenue and expense fortunately. It's a little tight with water, one. Fortunately, I don't believe we're at the point that you have to consider a water rate increase, but that, the budget is tight. But, you know, hopefully that will stay well. Ron and the folks at the Village of Waterloo have been doing a lot of work on leak assessment and tightening some things up. The new meter down in Romulus, I think, has helped. Of note, on sewer 3, the, really the primary amount out of that 470,000 is the debt service on that relatively new formed district. The Delago capital amount gets programmed in here. There, we'll hit a point, I know we've had some talk over the last few years about trying to move some of that Delago funding into other parts of the county and other projects. I'm hoping maybe next year, we'll be ready to start doing that. 40 and 50 are the highway funds. Inter-fund transfer and some fund balance. Workers' comp, which is 60, is balances between revenue and expense. And then risk management fund, 65. Some general fund transfer and some use of some fund balance. The fund balance on that is a little over 2 million. That shouldn't go too low, but again, it's trying to kind of balance the general fund. I put that in. The next page, which is the last one I have, unless there's questions, is a summary of our county affiliate funding request and/or allocations. Soil and Water, I met with Aaron a bit ago. Soil and Water has asked for 516,991 in '23. The tentative budget honors that request in full. Ave is here. Cornell Cooperative Extension requested 445,000. T tentative budget honors that full request. Our libraries collectively, along with the Finger Lakes group that is part of the hub of the library network, collectively requested 140,000. That full amount of the request is in the budget. Traditionally, the county has provided 6,000 a year for the county fair. Beverly Animal Shelter, 50,000, I programmed in the same with this year. SCTC, you may recall, that's a group of volunteers, primarily South County-based, who volunteer to drive folks to medical appointments and other things. They're still going. There was a few years ago, we had to add some money because there was a lot of volume. It has leveled off a little bit and put it in at the same 15,000. IDA has been at 54,000 for a number of years now. I have let Sarah Davis and the IDA know that that amount was programmed in. Chamber of Commerce, we talked a little bit about the bed tax revenue. So the amount that would go under the formula to the chamber is the TPA, 585,80428. And the county has continued to provide support to Pathway Home out of 414. So again, that's a high-level overview. I don't know Supervisor Reynolds or the board if you're interested in workshops between now and your consideration of adoption, you know, whether we did it on a couple of weeknights or you wanted to do something on a Saturday morning, or if you want to take some time to further consider whether you want to do that or not. I'd like to thank all department heads for their work. And on that note, all the department requests have also been honored. And I'll leave it at that for now and welcome any questions.
Mitch? I don't know if this is the right place to ask this at this time, but since Aaron is here, I'm just curious why such a big jump in soil and water? I mean, it's a pretty noticeable increase in a budget. I guess, I'm just curious.
I can speak for that a little bit. So we would like to hire a new person, a new technician. I don't know if you recognize from my presentation, but we have a lot of work. There is state money out there to implement these projects. We don't have enough staff to apply for the funding. And so if we have an extra person to help apply for the funding and implement it, we can get more done. So it's a salary for a new staff person as in, you know, all the ancillary benefits.
Thank you.
Chairman Reynolds.
Jeff, go ahead.
Mitch, Mike and the committee, great job again on the budget. Considering what we did with salaries and so forth, great job. I personally don't need any purpose. I personally don't need any purpose for workshops, but that's just my own two cents.
Kyle?
Mitch, do you have an idea of what the fund balance is for the General Fund rolling over into '23?
I could pull it up. I know that the Tax Reduction Reserve, not including the proposed 3.3 million, is at a little over 16 million. If you can give me a minute, I can, I don't know, Haley, if you have that off the top of your head, but I can pull up the balance sheet information real quick right now.
No worries. You can email it to me or something.
Okay, we'll do it. But it's, it is, it's substantial.
I know. Thank you.
It's a chunk.
There was a loaded question, by the way.
Yes, it was.
Bob, got a question?
Yeah, I'd like to thank the county manager for doing such an excellent job to balance everything that we have going here. I think that's great, considering the amount of pay increases that we gave to our employees this past year to balance everything so tightly. I can see you had to squeeze a few areas. Good job, Mitch.
Yeah, we spent a lot of money there on raises, salaries and stuff there, and we seemed to survive it.
It was needed.
It was needed, definitely needed, and we got through it, and we had the money to do it with, so it's going to work.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Mitch, one, or Mike, whomever, one question. So looking at the numbers in terms of the revenue, my math comes up like there's still 26 million short. Is that, is that like state and federal aid?
Yes, and a few years back, I did include those numbers. I didn't on this, but yeah, like particularly DHS as a department, mental health and others that there is. I can certainly very easily pull that together, but yes.
Yeah, I'm good.
And then there's some departments, environmental health codes, there's permit fees and some other things that come in as well.
That makes sense to me. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't making the incorrect assumption.
Yeah. The rest we're going to get from the Town of Fayette.
Sure.
Or the Town of Tire.
I think Tire. I think Tire, yeah.
Sounds like tires, definitely.
Tire loaded.
Any other questions?
For a capital charge, yeah.
You can see no questions. What about the workshops? You want to talk about now, or you want to digest this and come back two weeks? Or what do you want to, what's your flavor?
Yeah, I'd like to dig in some more before we schedule.
Want to look at it some more before we talk about it? We could.
We'll just send Kyle to Mitch's office, and the rest of us.
Looking over for it.
All your sales tax money is going to disappear, so I'm all right with that.
Okay, all right, we'll wait on that, and maybe next board meeting, we could call committee together and schedule a hearing, or schedule a workshop then. So, okay, let's go on to number two. Click of the Board, authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing for the 2023.
Mr. Chairman.
Motion to be budgeted.
I need some clarification, so if you didn't vote on number one.
Oh, we didn't?
And you don't want to, because you're going to have a workshop.
We have to vote on that, or weren't we adopting?
I don't know.
I mean, if we adopt it now, it goes to the full Board in two weeks.
It just moves along to the full Board.
Okay, so, all right, committee. All in favor of this budget?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Hearing none.
Okay, so that's adopted. Now, next one. Advertise for a public hearing for the 2023 budget.
So moved.
Support.
Margaret, do you have a date? You'd like to do this, or, heck, can we, because we got to do some advertising and all that stuff. When do we have to?
Two weeks.
Two weeks?
Do you want to do it before the board meeting, or do you want to start for a public hearing?
What do we usually do?
The resolution.
The law says November 8.
Yeah, the resolution I prepared is November 8, and then requested a special meeting of the full Board tonight to, for the purpose of moving that resolution forward.
Sounds good.
So if you're going to have any workshops, you need to do it between now and the 8th?
I don't remember. We didn't have workshops last year.
No.
I'm okay with this.
We're having a public hearing on November 8.
Public hearing, then? If you get the public hearing, then you most likely would adopt the budget after the public hearing in the regular meeting.
Then you can adopt, or you can wait another month, I don't, whatever you want.
Don't have to.
It's a good budget.
What's your cutoff, Mitch? What's your?
Little December.
Yeah, the one issue that's come up that, last year, because the Board adopted the budget, I want to say it was December 14th, it was whatever, the second Tuesday in December, which doesn't leave Lisa and the Towns a lot of time to get those tax bills together. So I wasn't really cognizant of that until it was too late. So one of the reasons to try to, not to be hasty, but to try to do this in November, if you're comfortable, is that that will leave Lisa and her staff and the Towns ample time to get the tax bills ready and get the bill stuff ready to go out.
There's a lot of uproar in the assessors and office and all these things, so, yeah, I think that's a really good idea. So, yeah, you don't have to, obviously, on the 8th, but if we can, we can.
If anything comes up between now and the 8th, then we can kick it back two more weeks and do a special hearing in late November.
Absolutely.
All right, let's get it scheduled, and then we'll worry about, later, we'll cross that bridge when we come to it. Okay, so we're going to do the 8th. I guess I need to cut the resolution. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
And if I could, real quick, the unreserved fund balance, general fund balance is 13.46 million.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Okay, down to number three. Water Supervisors authorize a memos of the 2022 budget.
Motion.
Be involved, Haley.
Second.
Got a first and a second? All right, Haley?
Good evening. Note number one relates to the Highway Department increasing fuel costs for needing 150,000, hopefully to get us through the end of the year. Note number two is a movement between contractual lines in the DSS area for one program that needs them more than the other program at this time. Note number three is where the Community College chargebacks start to go over the budgeted amount, and we are going to be using some of the gain on the tax sale that we have this year that was over what was budgeted to offset those extra costs. And then note number four is the impact from the healthcare worker bonus payments that we received and what we have paid out. So for your information.
Any questions for Haley? Oh, go ahead, Kyle.
We get all the healthcare bonuses settled out? We know how much everybody's making?
Well, these are the amounts for the vesting period, first vesting period, I believe. Laura, there's another one.
Yep, Haley, if you're doing them tomorrow, submitting with the Department of Health.
We have a final answer on which staff members are getting bonuses and which are not, across the whole county?
You won't?
We added a couple more this go-round, and I am going to include the jail folks. We're not included the first time, but they're letting the, it's important to know, kind of match over, or I can include them. And I've kind of followed the lead of other, state, and they're submitting it under the Department of Health.
Good job. Keep it going.
Okay, any other questions? All right, all in favor of approving this, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Mr. Chairman, before Haley sits down, can I ask Haley a question?
Yes.
Hey, so how are we coming on the audit?
So, good point that you ask that. The draft entries have been received and reviewed, and I would note that there's three entries of most significance. Two of the entries relate to the payroll payables account, which I had mentioned previously. Those will have a net decrease to the general fund balance of $364,000. The third is an entry to set up an allowance for uncollectible accounts in the amount of $3,700,000 for the Cayuga Indian Nation unpaid property tax receivable. And that would also decrease fund balance. And the reason why I believe they're asking us to do this at this point where we had not previously, was in previous years, we had Cayuga Indian Nation reserve funds, but since we have used up those reserves or depleted them down, now we need to set aside potentially some fund balance to not be unencumbered, you know, unreserved, until either we collect the monies, like, and then we would reduce our allowance, or whether at some point it's never collectible, we just can't use that reserve fund balance. So those are the entries that have come. We did receive a draft report late on Friday, and with that draft report, Erica from Dresch Malachi's office is asking for a few returned items and expecting to issue the final report during the week of October 31st, and then would like to look at presenting the financial statements at a meeting after that point. So the next meeting would be your board meeting, if you wanted to try and do it then, or if you would want to put it off till the next committee cycle.
Quicker the better. When does it have to be submitted to Albany?
As soon as we can get it.
That, was your question, Bob, or do you have another?
Yeah, no, I was just going to point out that, that one of the funds she was talking about was when we were receiving offset payments from New York State.
Right.
And we have far gone.
They dried up.
Right.
Dried up a long time ago. Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Haley? I guess this committee stands adjourned. There's no other old business or new businesses, is there? I don't see, so, many stands adjourned.
Thank you, Supervisors Reynolds. Next up, Mental Health Services, Chair Partee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have four issues tonight. Issue number one, the Mental Health and Substance Abuse 2023 Agreements for Contract Services. Is there a motion?
Motion.
So I got.
Margaret?
We contract for specialized clinical and medical services each year, and this is an accounting of that, those expenditures.
Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Issue number two, the 2023 Mental Health Services Provider Agency Contracts.
Motion.
So I got.
Oh, did I get that wrong?
No, there's two separate resolutions for the agreements for contract services and then the provider agency contracts.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. We also pass state aid through to agency and community providers. So that's, that's what the other one is. So the first one is our providers for specialized services. The second one is community providers where the local government unit, which is separate from, like, the clinic, that's my role as the Director of Community Services, is to pass through that funding from the state to the agencies in our community that provide services to persons with mental illness and substance use disorder. And so that's what that is, the state aid.
Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Moving on to issue number three. Authorization for Seneca County Staff Tammy Orlop, did I pronounce that correctly?
Yes.
Of the Seneca County Mental Health Department to attend CADCA, the Annual Leadership Forum, from January 30th through February 2nd, 2023, in National Harbor, Maryland.
Motion.
This is, I'm sorry.
Is there a second?
So I got.
Okay, Margaret.
Thanks. This is an annual conference that Tammy attends. Because of COVID, we didn't have it last year. However, they are doing it again this year, and so we bring it to the Board because it's outside of the catchment area that we can approve.
Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Moving on to issue number four. Supervisors approve Terry Haskins' FNP Contract Amendment.
Motion.
So I got.
Terry is a family nurse practitioner who helps to support prescribing activities in our outpatient clinic, and we are in need of additional hours to meet demand.
Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Is there any unfinished business for this committee? Any new business? We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Supervisor Partee. Next up, Water Sewer Treatment and Management and Operations, Chairman Hayes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to call a committee to order. I don't know if we have any, Mitch, we get any more updates from our last meeting with the RFP or Sewer Treatment Plant?
Still working on that. I should have that together soon and kind of tied up with the budget at the risk of excuse-making. Also, nothing from my perspective to report, still nothing from docs relative to financial commitments. More to come on the Willard front. There's work underway to create, which I know you're aware of, a task force, if you will, multi-public and community sectors. And we had that second tour a couple of weeks ago, but still no answers. So I will have, be sure to have something more to report at our next meeting.
Okay. I do have a meeting with the docs Friday over some other issues we have with them, so I'll try to poke the bear to get them to see if they can, something about the sewer, anything, just seeing as how they're quiet, and they've been quiet. We poke them while they're trying to talk, right? While they're talking money now, let's see if I can poke them.
Well, I'm thinking of it, Cardazzo completed that work at the Million-Gallon Reservoir yesterday, so that moved pretty quickly. And third quarter bills will be going out to water and sewer users. One other thing, I think the whole, I know the Water and Sewer, the Water and Sewer Committee, but I think maybe the whole Board at one point, the management at Spring Meadows has contacted us, have had a few conversations regarding how we do the billing, which reminded them respectfully that the way we're billing now is the way they ask for us to bill, is that all the bills for the 100-plus accounts all go to them. They would like to, effective the first of the year, they would like to go back to the tenants receiving the bill directly, and then they'd like to have an accounting of it so that they can manage the finances, if you will, as it relates to unpaid bills and re-levees on the tax bill, which goes on their tax bill. They've been paying and ending up a little short on the revenue side, so we've had a few conversations about it. They'd like to go back to, not the bills that are getting ready to go out, probably maybe went out this afternoon or tomorrow, but going forward, the next time a bill goes out, they want the tenants billed directly, so.
Is that going to be any difference in cost? I mean, our cost, we do the same thing now. We read the meters now, right, going into the houses?
Yeah, we do. It might be an additional mailing fee, because instead of mailing one to them, it'll be a few more, but.
Minimal.
Yeah.
So, question, who picks up the bill if the tenant doesn't pay the bill and walks out?
I think ultimately, at the end of the day, the landlord is responsible because it'll end up being a re-levy, you know, if it hits the point that, you know, it's past due to the point that we would re-levy it like any other unpaid charge. I think they're thinking that they may be able to monitor the quarterly billing a better way with the tenants getting the bills directly. I think time will tell.
With we bill the tenants directly, does that mean we have the option of shutting off for non-payment, or does that not go away because it's?
Well, I think by email, not in discussion, there'd been a little bit of talk about to shut off or not to shut off, and I know the Village of Waterloo, as the operators, their preference would be not. Scott, I can't remember if you and I talk too much, but there's certainly a public health concern when you start shutting water off. At the end of the day, it's the Board's prerogative on whether or not it wants to do shut-offs, you know, for non-payment under whatever the protocol would be.
Decreasing pressure is always a good way. We do it when you don't pay. We decrease the pressure.
Slow down?
We don't have to do it very much, but, I mean, when it's persistent for years, and, you know, sometimes people are on the other side of the line for a different township, you know, and they refuse to pay. Oh, my water pressure's bad. Well, your water pressure's bad because you owe $3,000 in your water bill. Oh, you know, come down, make a payment. I bet it improves really quickly.
Very often, I'll just comment, a part of that calculation that some operators make to shut off or not is, are their children at home, or is it just adults?
Yep, understood.
So are we going to collect the money then? The money will be coming to the county then on these bills? on these bills?
Yes.
Yeah. More work for us.
Okay. Oh, I have a question for you. I don't know if it's a time to ask, but the question is, is the town of Ramis has been paying the lighting district for the depot, which is actually under the water district. We'd like to give that back and not have to mess with it anymore. We'd like to have the county take over their own lighting district. It's been that way for years, ever since when the town of Ramis was running the water.
I remember during my former time when I was in the planning department and since I've been back, I do have some emails and the like from Pat Jones, who was intricately involved in that. I will put that on my to-do list to pull that up.
Reasoning I'm doing this is because the fund balance is getting low. So what's gonna happen is we're gonna have to ask the county to pay money into the fund to keep the lights on, right? So we'd rather just give it back to the county and let the county put the funds in their own balance, right?
All right, I'll pull those documents up and I'll follow up with you.
Thanks. Okay, any unfinished business? New business? Our sewer committees?
Very good.
Adjourned.
Thank you, Chairman Hayes. That's it.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Can I get a committee together to address the weed harvesting program while we're all here? Could Mike be on it and maybe you and Mitch? That'd be all right, because you've been hanging around weed control since the 80s too.
Were you talking about me?
Yeah.
That's how I, why I ran for office, to get weed harvesters to guide you.
He's been doing a lot, he's been doing a lot around weed for a long time, no doubt.
About himself.
Took my joke right away.
Oh, that was.
So Mitch and Bob Heisen and Mike Ferrara and I could be on a steering committee to...
Shouldn't we have some, like Mike or I from soil and water?
Well, we're meeting with the board.
Oh, okay, all right. I got you. All right.
Got it?
Yep.
We also can be on a county committee if you want.
Jesus.
We're all gonna be in the same room though, hopefully. But if we can get a time together, let them digest it. Maybe Aaron can contact the people in Cugee County, see what their plan's on. Maybe if they have another harvester, they can promise us, you know, some spring service or something. Lily pads are out of control.
Well, either way, you gotta have a plan B.
Yeah, right. Aaron, is there, I'm assuming Cugee County has an equivalent of your position?
Yes.
Maybe have, yeah.
I've spoken with them. He has, he's willing to, and we have a contract with them, they are willing to harvest for us.
Okay.
Can we get a date, you know, a start date or something?
Can you send an email to everyone that you want on the committee?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
She wants to send out an email, so.
Date to me.
If we put out a group email to Aaron and Mike Reynolds and Jeff, myself, et cetera, et cetera, and then we can get a date on the calendar and then in the meantime, maybe Aaron can talk to Cugee County and see if, how committed they really are.
When does the board record together?
When's our, Mike, when's our next meeting, Aaron?
Scheduled for the 28th, November 28th. We're talking about rescheduling this to November 12th.
Yeah, we want to, we're gonna try two, two meetings at once next month, so.
But maybe we should have a meeting just for this. Is that, okay?
Here or your office or?
You're welcome to meet at our office, yeah.
When's good for, I won't be here the 5th through the...
No, 5th of November?
Yeah. I won't be here from the 5th to the 12th. I'll be off the grid. Any other times good for me?
Make sure you vote.
Pardon?
Make sure you vote.
I'll vote this weekend.
This weekend.
Oh, don't worry about it, Paul.
Everybody vote red, don't.
You'll be all right. We'll be all right. Got plenty to cover you.
Aaron, what about, what if, and Mike, what about the 14th? If we tried to do it Monday, the, I'm thinking just to get, you'll be back, right?
During the day?
But I have.
Yeah, I got, I got, I got a board meeting at night, that night, but um, we can do, we can do the 14th.
Late in the afternoon maybe or something.
14?
Right.
I heard the 14th.
Stand and support.
Or we can just send.
We can do the 14th, you know, I work around that.
Is that for this new committee, the 14th? Yes? Well, let me check my schedule then now. I thought we were gonna do this via email.
14th of November. Get a time, Mr. Chairman?
Some people work.
Really feels like an email.
Pretty close.
I have a 6 o'clock meeting. I'm available all day. I have a 6 o'clock meeting.
Yeah, so do I. I got a 7 o'clock, so yeah.
So, I don't know.
When do you get done, when do you get done at the dentist?
You guys wanna, you wanna maybe email it out?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'll send out an email, okay, to the powers to be and I'll ask them what time they're available, all right?
They work? They at the country club?
They work. We can meet at the country club. We can meet at Bodine's and look at some weed there. I don't care where you do it.
On Crete, that's all that's left there.
I can provide free water and.
Do we have, we have another meeting tonight?
All right, we'll email each other, come up with a date, tentatively November 14th each, around there.
We're shooting for that.
We can do emails. See if we can get something nailed down.
I'm just gonna block it in so I don't.
Okay. Isn't that how it works? And when I close, when I close, isn't that the end of the committee meetings? When I close mine, that's the end of the committee meetings, right?
Right, yeah.
So let's go to the special ones. So I'd like to get going.
Where are you going?
I got things to do, man.
Always got things to do.
Yes, I do.
Usually not here. Okay, we're onto a real meeting now, a real board meeting. You all ready here?
Yes, let's go.
Rippen.
Now we gotta wait for Ferrara.
Bang to gavel.
I apologize.
Went out to do an email.
You're not gonna gavel me, are you?
Yes.
You're holding up the whole meeting.
I apologize.
Thank you. I'd like to call the special board meeting to order for tonight. And Margaret, can you do the roll call?
Supervisor Reynolds?
Here.
Supervisor Jeff Bree Trout?
Here.
Supervisor Brownell?
Here.
Supervisor Barnhart? Supervisor Boers? Supervisor Hayes?
Here.
Supervisor Ferrara?
Here.
Supervisor Croninwetter?
Here.
Supervisor Reinhardt?
Here.
Supervisor Partee?
Here.
Supervisor Heisen?
Here.
Supervisor Don Trout? Supervisor Anzlo?
Here.
Supervisor Shipley?
Here.
Miss it.
Supervisor Barnhart is here now too.
All right.
You have a floor, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and Moment of Silence.
Pledge of Allegiance.
United States of America.
Republic of America.
One nation, one God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have one resolution here. Finance assessment and insurance. Supervisor Reynolds?
Thank you, Chairman Heisen. Clerk to the Board authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing for the 2023 Seneca County budget.
Support. All that, second. Any discussion?
Don't nothing, go on, go on.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay, we got one more item. Mr. Ferrara wants to get some more, keep us here longer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion here to enter an executive session. Hang on, one second. Pursuant to section 105, 1F of the New York State Open Meetings Law, I move to enter into executive session to discuss personnel matters and invite the following individuals, all members of the Board of Supervisors. No action is anticipated. Could I have a second for that, please?
Second.
Thank you.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Now an executive session. We don't expect to take any business, action, right?
No.